Good evening. I'd like to call the school board meeting, SAU 26 for January 12, 2023. Will everyone please rise for the National Anthem or Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to our budget meeting tonight. I want to open up the floor to public participation. For anyone who would like to come forward, please remember to state your name and your address. If you're a student, you never have to give us your address. Just state that you are a student. Alright, seeing none, we will move on to our budget presentations. I want to welcome Tom Tussow and our maintenance budget.
I'd like to start off-
Hello, Tom. Before we begin, because this is the first time we've seen you since the broken pipe, the board would like to take this opportunity to thank you and the team for all your hard work, for showing up on Christmas Day, showing up on the day after which would be your Christmas holiday, all the work you did to get school opened for our children. It was deeply appreciated and noticed.
Thank you very much. Okay, as noted, I'm Tom Tussow, I'm the Maintenance Director for Merrimack School District. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2023-2024 school budget. There are three items that I'd like to speak about at the top. One item will be district-wide building repair costs has went up significantly. You're also going to see in this budget, second item would be an emergency retrofit lease cost for the unit ventilators that we put in. That is also in this budget. And the third item I'd like to talk about is the increased cost in utilities. I know there's going to be some questions about that, but I just wanted to start off by highlighting those three areas. And at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any questions and how you'd like to proceed.
I believe you, did they receive a copy of these questions?
We did.
So you can just go straight through them, or you can take whichever question you'd like?
We've been reading them too.
Oh, you've been reading too? Well, I apologize then.
No, that's the way we did it, and that was because of me. I asked because when we did it, did you do-
It was more natural.
It was more natural. Last time it was like they would read it and then I find it was weird. So, we started the front page, like Lori's first, she'll ask her questions and we'll go from there.
Great, perfect.
So, so first of all, I wanted to know, I read that you calculated your costs this year, but you said it was more difficult. So I just wanted to get a little insight on how you came up with the numbers.
When we looked at the numbers overall for all the utilities that we use, the first thing that came to our mind is it's probably not a typical year. As everybody has from their, everybody's home, has seen obviously huge increase. What I did in one of the utilities that we use, we talked to our reps and we asked them, where do we see it coming? And obviously, they're not going to commit to anything. They're not going to tell you anything. What we did get from one of them was that you can expect probably three raises, and this is when we started preparing the budget a few months ago, three raises in the rates. And historically, none of the raises are more than 5%. So that gave us a kind of a jumping off place of 15%. And unfortunately, it sounds to me like incredibly high, but with reality of today is it's not going to be incredibly high. I'm hopeful that that's enough, and I believe it is enough, and that's why we put it in the budget. And that's where we came. So what we started with is we based most of the calculations off of known costs, what we expended the year before prior, and then we went up 15% from that. So that was kind of a way, there's also another little kick, and people may say, yeah, how about water? We did receive, there's a card that went out earlier and it says, because of the increase for the PFOA filtration system, that we should plan on an increase. So that kind of factored in there too. So, meeting with Matt, our business superintendent, and coming discussing, and that's where we ended up at 15%.
If I could, if I could just kind of chime in a little bit. There's a couple of wild cards involved in that. Number one is the ever-source distribution charge, which is going up considerably, which we have no control over. And then there's the part about the supply. We have been bidding out electricity for 20 years. We're locked in probably around a 10 cents a kilowatt until the year 2027, which I'm sure everybody would love to have that rate right now and through that time period. So that's one of the, that's one of the benefits. We also, over the course of the last couple of years, added 72 unit ventilators, Tom, something like that?
I believe it was somewhere around 72.
Somewhere around that number. You recall, a couple of years ago, we had a lease purchase of $4 million to do unit ventilators for indoor air qualities, not indoor air quality, but CO2 levels. So when you add 72 of them, you're adding draw to the electricity. And then we had the COVID years where we were running the HVAC 24/7. So we've got a bunch of wild cards in. The only thing we know is we got a fixed unit charge per kilowatt, but then you're trying to factor all these other things in. And I think we kind of arrived at a safe solution that's not going to put us underwater for '24, '25. So it's a little bit complex, and some of it is, you know, wishful thinking and a little bit of, you know, finger in the air, see which way the wind's blowing, but we think we're comfortable with those numbers that we have.
Well, I was going to add too, I know that you belong to those organizations in the state where they all talk together about rates and what they think the rates are. So pretty much most school budgets in the state are going to look similar to this on increases.
Oh, absolutely. You know, especially during the COVID years and then the increases in the HVAC. You know, even when I talk to my auditors, everybody looks at us and says, yeah, we're seeing this all over the place, all over the state. So it's very, we're very typical of all the other districts. And when we speak as a group, we, you know, share stories. Like, I guess I'll tell you a few of those later on, but yeah, we do.
Okay, so the next question, how many full-time, how many part-time staff do we have in the Maintenance Department in the Merrimack School District? Do you think we have a high turnover rate? And are we understaffed at this point in time? That's a lot of questions.
Nope, but I'm perfectly willing to tell you everything, and unfortunately, it's not going to be, it's pretty shocking if you really look at it. The total number of people that I have in my department, including myself, is 43 and a half positions. We have roughly 33 custodians that work for Merrimack School District. 27 of them work on nights. Right now, we have 13 openings for custodians.
How, just how long has it been since you've had somebody come through the door to apply?
I could tell you, the last person that we've hired that stayed with us was hired January 27, 2000. So it's been roughly three years. In those three years, we've had, we've hired six other people, none of them have stayed. We also have roughly, well, we do have six and a half maintenance positions. Out of that, right now, we have one and a half maintenance positions open. So as far as staffing, we are very understaffed.
So what do you think, what do you think the major issues are for being understaffed? I know, I know on the town side, they're completely understaffed too. So I'm just trying to understand, what do we need to do to attract and keep this help? Because the turnover rate, what I understand is pretty high, so we're spending a lot of money training and then retraining.
I think one of the major impacts is in, if, when I talk about six people in the last three years that walk through my doors, and those people have probably stayed anywhere from a week to another month. It's, they don't walk through the front door. So I would say whatever it is, is the initial look at the district, meaning it's the cost benefits. I've actually, and this is, I don't know if I want to say this, but I've actually had some people come in and say to me, well, I like the work, but I don't work on Friday. It's, unfortunately, we can't do that. I mean, our students go to work, they come to school, and they need a clean place every day. So it's attracting people through the front door is our biggest issue. And I think this is, I talked to Matt about this, I talked to Melissa about this. And as you said, it is, it is all across the state, I believe. I don't have the answer.
See, it's very, it's very hard to get hands-on labor that wants to come to work every single day. You can't hire such a thing as a remote custodian. They need to be here. They don't have the option of working at home. I, last I checked, and Tom, I'm probably way off on this figure, that when we had a full crew, each custodian on the night shift was in charge of around 24, 25,000 square feet? Something like that?
That, that's correct.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I can't remember that number.
24, 25, and 27 probably at the high schools. So the upper grades, they cover more.
So during a regular shift, the custodians are responsible for cleaning 27,000 square feet of buildings. It's a lot of work. So it's not easy work, but in the pay, you know, we have to look at that next time we go into negotiations with the mess of support staff. You can probably make a little more in other areas, but we do offer good benefits. So it's just hard to get people in the door, and it's hard to maintain them. You know, we've had, we've been fortunate enough to have some excellent people who have been with us for 30-something years, you know? And it's sad when you see those people retire. We've had a lot of that, especially on the Maintenance Mechanic sections, the one that takes care of the HVACs, the electrical, the plumbing, the, everything like that. I mean, those are trusted people that we rely on, and it's very difficult to fill those gaps once those people leave. In fact, we don't seem to allow them to leave fully, you know? Because if we can drag them back a couple of days, because they know things that only they know, we will do that, and we have done that in the past. So we've tried a lot of things.
Tom, may I ask, that 24, 25,000 square feet, is that when you were fully staffed, did you say?
That's correct.
Because if you keep that in perspective, or put it in perspective, and I know the nature of the spaces are different, but that's the equivalent of about cleaning 10 homes for every custodian at night during the peak cleaning hours, which is an extraordinary amount of work. And I will say, in looking at the schools in Merrimack compared to other school districts, I think we have some of the cleanest schools that you will find in any school district. You and the guys have done, and women have done an outstanding job.
Yeah, and that's how I was going to finish. I was going to say, you know, even with down people, even with older schools, our schools are so clean. And I, and I realized that when I started to go to other schools when I was a coach, and then when I became an administrator, and I, I just was like blown away like how clean Merrimack was versus other places. And then my final thing, and this goes back to last week when we were talking about all the people who make a difference, the lunch ladies, et cetera, but your administrative assistant, Debbie Donahue, was the administrative assistant to Dennis Pope, who hired me as a, and so, when they asked like, what is it, what is it for new teachers? Well, she, even back then, she was a mother, right? She was a mother to all of us. She helped us do our billing. She helped us order our supplies. She was there for Kleenex if we were having a bad day. And that was 1981. She's still here, and I, you know, when we were talking about important people in the schools, you just don't know who those people are, but she would have been one for me.
Alright, I'm going to move to my most important question, and this is in regards to the girls' softball dugout. Now, as a former softball player, I do recognize the importance of that. But considering what we are facing this year, I'm wondering if we could take that out of the budget and move it to the Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay. The Capital Improvement Plan starts off at a minimum of $100,000. So with this being less than that, it wouldn't make the Capital Improvement Plan? But I can give you a little background of how that all came about, and-
Can I elaborate with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the CIP, you know, is something you do is if you work in a town, you work in a school district, you're responsible to do that. And it's, the RSA's say, or best practice is always said, it's 100K or more, it goes in the Capital Improvement Plan. And talking with Bill Dunn in Mass, they had a little bit different standard for that. It could be feathered into the master plan piece, which we're, you know, that's evolving very slowly over time. But as, to place it somewhere, we didn't place it in the CIP specifically because of the dollar.
Well, and I will say, that's, that's what the reasoning that I put in there was as part of our field development for that master plan. If there was a change or a move, or we wanted to do something different, I feel like that's a much better piece of the master plan rather than putting it in this year's budget.
See, right now, as far as the fields that are in that area, we're not considering doing anything to those as far as master plan goes. It's all on the right-hand side of O'Gara Drive as you drive up O'Gara, from Bobusick.
And I was going to take some blame for this too, because last year's budget, I was all over baseball, softball, being equity, having equal uniforms, dugouts, et cetera. So I said, under Title IX, Title IX is going to be 50 years old, we've got to start having equity. So I'm going to say that some of that actually came from the board. But I do agree, where we're going to have the master plan, and we might move fields. It's, we might not, we might, I mean, no or yes?
Right now, no.
No.
That is, that is not in the plan to move any fields. We do have the ability, once we, if we clearcut that acre of land that we own at the end of the high school parking lot, to create an additional field, but it's nothing in that area.
It's not going to be in that area.
And Tom put it, you know, specifically in the operating budget, because he was, he said he was scared of Laurie Rothaus coming after him. Because he remembers that from last year. I'm only, I'm only kidding. But, but it is, but it is an equity issue, you know? And that's why it's in there.
And, and again, I'm very supportive of it in general. I'm just concerned with the technology piece that we have to do this year, with the iReady piece that we have to do this year, if this is the year to add this inner operating budget. That's only my concern. Not that I don't support it, because I absolutely support it. I'm just concerned this might not be the budget year to do it.
Yeah, that's why we have these discussions, because, you know, the budget process is a process where everything's out on the table, all questions are answered, and you have to make some choices. And the townspeople need to see you struggle with making choices, because it isn't easy.
And this is a tough one, especially this year.
Yeah, and can I pick, can I ask my question? I don't know that we've actually answered. Other than the fact that, you know, softball and baseball players need dugouts, is there a specific reason why this was chosen this year? Is it just like, this is the year to do it? Or I don't know if there was a bigger reason than, you know, we just need dugouts for these kids?
Well, I think Laurie and I were thinking along the same way last year.
Right, besides Laurie, besides Laurie.
With that said, and when you look over Merrimack School District, I look at it as a ship, not a boat. There's a lot of pots. And for many years, we've had dugouts for the varsity boys' baseball team. And for many years, we haven't. So my feeling was, and I talked to Mike Susi, who's our ID, and I go, Mike, I'm not going to start something if it's not out there, there's not a reason to start it, right? And Mike says, no, that's something that has always been talked about by the girls, and it seems like it's a budget issue that keeps on getting moved. So I said, Mike, I'm going to make a stand next year, just so you know, and I'm going to put in my budget, and it's going to go to Matt, and then when it goes to Matt, Matt can tell me, no, which is perfectly fine. But at least it's going to say that I brought it to somebody. And when I brought it to Matt, I'll let you-
Yeah, we, at that point in time, we decided to, even if it doesn't make the cut for this year, we decide to kind of showcase it in a public forum, so people know that it's being discussed and it's being addressed at some point, if not this budget year coming up next year or sometime in the very near future.
Well, and I love that you took a stand for that. I mean, because Lori's right, it is an equity issue. And I applaud you for taking that stand. I applaud you for leaving it in there. And if you get, if we ultimately have to cut it, at least there's four women cutting it. Does that make it better?
Well, and it's on the radar. It's on the board's radar, it's on the town's radar.
Sometimes we do, you're right Laurie, sometimes we do things like that to give it visibility.
Right.
You know, we're thinking, okay, this may or may not fly, but we want to give it visibility. Because we don't want 10 years to go by and say, well, how come we haven't heard about this dugout thing, you know? So that's, that's one of the reasons. So thank you.
And I actually have an answer to my other question, so I can skip it.
Alright, that looks like it makes it my turn. Okay, so my first question was about the dugout as well, so that's answered. And when we're talking about raising awareness for things that may not be in this year's budget, that's what my next question has to do with. This is on my mind for various reasons, but I don't see any repairs, upgrade, or maintenance for the Merrimack High School Little Theater anywhere in the budgets, maintenance or otherwise. Like, I don't know where necessarily would go, or whatever, but is there anything in the Little Theater that needs updating or maintenance to be usable? Looking in the budget, I couldn't see that any one area was owning it budget-wise, and I'm afraid that it might get overlooked in the process of being properly updated to make it usable. And the reason I asked this question is because my daughter went to see the Merrimack High School Musical last year, and being a theater kid, she came home, and she was like, that musical was great. There was one problem. And I was like, oh, what was the problem? They did it without microphones. And I was like, what? I mean, I'm a director, I've done a lot of theater, and I was like, what do you mean they did it without microphones? You can't have a musical without microphones. How'd they hear anybody? And she goes, well, it was tricky. And I was like, does tricky mean you couldn't hear them? She's like, sometimes. And I was, I was like stunned. I hadn't been to see a musical, and that, and then when I investigated a little, apparently like the technology is outdated, so I don't know who that falls under. I'm just saying, I became aware of this, speaking of bringing things into awareness. Again, not saying it belongs in the budget. It isn't in here. I'm literally asking a question that is not represented here, and I didn't know where to ask it, so.
Perfect.
Here we are.
Perfect. I'm going to start off with that we do upgrade those areas. And an example would be when we had the LED retro, the LED upgrade, the Little Theater did get upgraded. But that doesn't pertain especially to specialty items. And a specialty item would be like theater lighting, it's special for the theater, or sound systems, special, special to the sound system. And really not something in general that most people understand. It's really a theater person or person that would understand that. And, but I do have some good news for you.
What?
The good news is that I did talk to Matt, and we've talked to Steve Clare, and I believe that Steve Clare has money in this current year to do some of those upgrades to screen. And he told me he had enough to do what he needed to do. But I think he went to Matt and he worked that out.
Yeah, there's a line in the high school budget called "school improvement." It's around $11,000. I don't know the account number, because I don't have my budget in front of me at the moment, but I, I know it's there. And that's usually to respond to accreditation things from the NEAS crew when they come by every 10, 10 years. But we leave it in there for other things, like the, the video monitors, and not monitors, but the video screens in the high school caf, so kids can watch CNN or something like that, or the one outside the lobby. You know, it makes it nice. It's like, you know, you go to a doctor's office, you know, you need to see, you know, the news or something while you're waiting. It makes time goes by faster. So Steve is planning on using some of that money to upgrade some of the tech and working with Jason, of course, over there, our esteemed technology director, in the Little Theater. The Little Theater in and of itself, it's what, 200, what did you tell me, Tom?
248 seats.
248 seats. So it's not like it's a big production space. It can't even hold a class. So it's an awkward space, and, you know, I'm not even going to, it's, it's just, if you had a performing arts center that would hold a lot of people, that would be a little more usable. I remember, you know, where I went to school, there was a theater and it held quite a few people. It's now the middle school, but it's still where the theater is. And the Little Theater concept in its day, I think it was, I'm not sure what the rationale was behind it, but to only hold 248 people, it's not like you can have a big high school musical in there, which is usually held in the cafeteria of the stage. I'm sorry, Laurie, go ahead.
So I was going to say, so I went to Merrimack High School when that Little Theater was built. And so the building was proved in 1976. The high school had 800 kids, but there still wasn't any visionary for building a big theater. And it never really worked for the high school, because like Matt said, you know, you want to bring in guest speakers, you can't even bring in a whole class. Like, so you spend your whole day bringing in half of your classes, half the time you want to see them together. And it would be really awesome if we could either figure out how to expand and have dressing rooms and have a better theater, or build out. I know that's what Ken's thinking for when he wins Mega Bucks or whatever, you know, the build out. But, you know, that, that was, it was too small when it was built. But again, Merrimack was a different town then. It was, it was really a smaller town, and it was more blue collar, and it was harder to get budgets passed. So they did everything they could to get it, but they didn't make it big enough.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. No, no, you go. I'm going to wrap up.
Alright, cool. So, and this is a passion of mine, and all the things you're saying are right. And, you know, when you look at a performing arts center, it's so much bigger than performing arts, although we have one of the top performing arts departments in the state in our district, and they perform on a basketball court, and that's a crime, and I'll say that forever. But we can have school board meetings in Performing Arts Center. We can, you know, we have the primary in New Hampshire every four years. People can come and give speeches, and we can invite guests to come to the Performing Arts Center. We can rent our space out to people who are looking for performing arts centers. There's so many uses for that besides just what we need it for. It can be a moneymaker too. So there's so, it's obviously long-term, certainly not, we're getting in the weeds here a little bit. Certainly not something we're focusing on right now, but as long as I'm here, I will say that as often as I can.
Well, just to wrap up, you know, I happen to work a little bit in theater. I dabble in directing kids' productions, specifically for a dance studio. And we are always looking to rent performing arts centers, and we can almost never find one. It's very hard. You have to book out five million years in advance, and then you can't do it that weekend for something. You have to change something, and it's a colossal and abysmal mess. And every time that the, you know, the theater director will come, or the owner of the studio will come to me and say, well, what about Merrimack? And I'm like, I don't think that's going to work. But that's the kind of thing where these, these performing arts centers at these high schools, they, their district makes money on them, renting them out for huge events. Okay, so I just want to also say a disclaimer, since I mentioned my child. I am not saying this because I think my child needs to have anything. My child is actually not involved in theater at Merrimack High School. She's too busy doing it elsewhere, so this is not about my child. But it's about the fact that as a director, the kids that I'm directing in these shows, a giant proportion of them come from Merrimack. We have a ridiculous amount of talent, theater talent in this town. And the proportion of programming and facility to talent is just askew. So this is all awareness building, because I didn't see it anywhere. The Little Theater microphones, I'm glad to hear that there might be some progress on that. I just wanted to ask, thank you.
And also, it is a, it is a very important community cultural hub. And as you say, Ken, in my former district, it was used constantly. And we used it in the summer. We started a program about 12 years ago of the Summer School for the Performing Arts. And that first summer, we had about 50 students. When I left the employment of that district, we had about 350 to 400 students, who were not only from Westford, but the surrounding area, who were-
Who were just absolutely enthralled with the opportunities that we presented to them. For, we had, we ran three performances during the summer. And so it was extraordinarily important to the community and as, as a whole.
Is it my turn?
All right. Um, I'm gonna start with the, the first one I have on here was just to bring it to your attention. I don't think I need an answer to that one. There was, um, there were some numbers that in the, in the written description that didn't match up. And I was going, wait, and then I added them up and they worked and it's no big deal. But then my second question was looking at the list of all of the vehicles that we own. And this being my first year, I looked at that and went, oh my gosh, some of these are from like the 70s and 80s or, so how are they doing? When are we gonna need to think about replacing those?
Well, when we, when we do look at some of our older vehicles, uh, especially our tractors and stuff. They are still functioning at a high level. Uh, we maintain them. We're able to maintain them. Unlike a lot of things these days, they're still making parts for it, so we're excited. The replacement cost, I looked into a couple of years ago for the, uh, the 20 that we use every now and then. It's really like us tiny loader. The cost to repair it is not anywhere close. The vehicle that I looked at to replace it was somewhere around $65,000. And the return was not there and it's still performing. Would every, anybody like a new one? Absolutely. Is that gonna happen? No. Okay, so we're gonna move on from that saying it's really functioning okay for us and we're, we're happy with it. Some of the other items that we have in here, you look at some of the hand mowers, look old and stuff like that. But those are mowers that are well-maintained. Most of our mowing that we do, we do right now with our X-Marts. Uh, you don't see in this, we did purchase a new one last year, March of last year, that we have not received. The unit yet. It's still on order. And this is part of the dysfunctioning. It's happens everywhere, right? So we ordered it last March, still don't have it. But that is gonna replace the 2001 that you, that we're looking at now. Besides that, everything's going, but obviously for us, cost, this repair cost is right up there. And that's gonna impact us eventually.
My next question was, there was that line item that included the, um, the softball dugout. And that I, I had asked a question about the need for that and that was answered. And, um, I would wanted to make sure we pointed out that the other things in that line item, the, the resurfacing of the track and the gym floor standing are one. According to my, like, what I thought, reading it would look like they were one in, one in three years overdue, uh, respectively. So they're like need to be done's, not, not want to be done's at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct. They're at the point that we do need to do them.
Uh, my next question Matt answered for me earlier. And then my, my last kind of general question was, um, how are we doing it meeting the needs of the district maintenance-wise? Did the, the last couple of budgets, did they do, did they do a good job of it? Is, is 22, 23 looking like it's gonna be fine? Are there any kind of big projects that, being new, that I might not be aware of, that might be coming due? Or anything we've put off that is kind of worrisome?
Looking at this year's budget, there, there are gonna be definitely some sections or some lines that will look like they'll be over expended. But that'll be balanced during this year. We believe that we can come back to come in on budget. As we normally have to make adjustments as the year goes on, depending on needs. So as long as long-term projects, most of the time that's, we do deal with those big projects through the SIP. Uh, Matt does a good job laying them out and gives kind of the vision for it. And I'm not sure if that's where we want to talk too much about that tonight. But I, I'm definitely feel that you need to know that the overall master plan. The O'Gara Street, the O'Gara Drive there needs to be replaced. The parking lot in front of the high school needs work. Uh, there are definitely safety concerns that I would think, especially when you look at the dismissal time and some arrival time. And these are things that really need more attention. And that's why obviously they started the master plan. I'm just trying to really tell you, there is a need for that.
Yeah, in far as that, that's concerned, we're still waiting for Mr. Keach to, to give us a, a scope and a timeline. And to assign specific costs to various portions of what needs to be done when. The kind of cap on the, the end of it would be, you know, we've always talked about, uh, the potential for a new central office. And we have new numbers for that, but we'll talk about that, that later. But for Tom's budget, I did pass out the CIP that was approved by the Planning and Building Committee. It's the first time you're seeing it right now. Just so you know, there's two items on the, on the CIP, actually there's three. Two of which are not on the budget. We're, we're looking at, uh, this is potential for a warrant article, but we're not talking about warrant articles tonight. The roof at, um, J-Muse, M-E-S, J-Muse. Uh, that's something that, that's coming up that we're going to take a look at, uh, in regards to perhaps a warrant article. Last year, we had the roof at Thornton's Ferry that was like 1.44 million dollars, uh, that passed. And, uh, you know, this year we're looking at, uh, something along the lines of the same cost, a little bit, little bit less. At the upper elementary school. So we'll be discussing that at some point later on in the, uh, later on in the process when we get to that. That's the one big thing. It's not any operating budget. Although in years past, we've had placed roofs in the operating budget. When we were doing them, um, every single year, so. And then the board took a shift where they wanted it to be in warrant articles, which is fine. That's the purview of the board.
And we had a big discussion last year on that very thing, whether it was gonna be in the budget or warrant article.
Yeah, which is part of the, let me use an Andy Schneider reference, can I?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that's part of making the sausage, right? Thank you, Andy.
You guys answered so many, well, I had three, but you answered most of them. So I really just, and being a new member, um, still relatively new to figuring a lot of this stuff out. And I'm sure there are people who are watching now, um, who may or may not be aware of this. And I have absolutely no doubt this has been discussed at length by this very group of people. And just making sure I'm reading this correctly, are we in fact proposing close to eight grand to provide heat, water, and electricity to a building that we do not use? I.e. the Brentwood building, um, which I know has been on the, a subject of, let's get rid of it. We don't use it. We don't need it. Um, and for folks who are asking where we can cut, you know, the cost of demoing this building will continue to go up. As will the cost of maintaining this building will continue to go up. So I guess I'm just looking, is, is that in fact what I'm reading, that we're budgeting this much money for a building we have absolutely no use for?
The answer is absolutely, yeah. And it's probably running us a little more than you see because you're not taking in the time that my staff have to go over and take care of it. And do certain things in that area. So that, that's the amount in the budget. But there is also a people factor that go into that too.
When that building was fully operational, uh, or before we purchased it from Suresk. The utility cost, because it's 10,000 square feet, was around $25,000 a year to keep that building heated properly. This is minimal heat. The water is, is minimal because we've got to keep the sprinkler system charged. The only way to get those utilities down to the, down to zero without demolishing the building. Is to shut off the gas, shut off the heat, shut off the water. Inform the fire department and the, the, um, building department that we're gonna classify that as an abandoned building. And we're going to board up the doors, board up the windows so no one can gain.
Which is a great look when you go onto a high school campus.
Yeah, I know. You know, in talking with the fire chief from you, a couple of years ago, that's the only way we can. Because we want to ensure, and the fire department wants to know that there's no one in there if we're gonna shut off all the safety measures. You know, like the, the sprinkler system and everything like that, which has the water. And you can't have a sprinkler system if you're not gonna heat the building because then everything freezes up. And you have, uh, a natural sprinkler system, water just gushing all over the place. So there's certain utilities as base you have to keep going, even though you're not utilizing it. Think of it as that huge vacation home that you have on Winnebago Saki, right? Don't think of it as that. Totally relatable. Yeah, I know. But, you know, as Tom said, and it doesn't include some of the incidental repairs that we've had to do along, along the way. So the only other option is to just cut everything off and then just board everything up. But then the police do use it for training every so often. So, you know, that's minimum to keep it running, um, until we decide to do something. And that will be at your discretion.
And that is on the CIP?
Yes, I have, I have a, a number there that, uh, 350, 350,000. People think that, oh, that's a little bit too much, but, you know, a couple of years ago it was like 200,000 and.
Right, and in a couple more years, it's gonna go up.
500,000 to get rid of it. Cause you know, it's a big building. I know the town has offered their support with providing trucks, but they're still gonna charge us 95 bucks a ton to haul that thing away. And we want to demo all the foundational work and we want to get rid of some of the asbestos that's on the lower level. Asbestos there, right?
We certainly would need to be testing.
We would need to test, right. But I know, I know what it is because it's in, there are nine by nine tiles there and I know exactly what that is. So we, we're gonna test it. So it's, it's gonna cost, you know, we'll see. It'll be something we bid out to see. You know, come on, go through a site walk and see how much to just get rid of it, so.
It sure would be great to not see that in any future budget, that's for sure. Brentwood maintenance stuff.
And, and I just want to say, I totally agree with Ken and the Building and Planning Committee for five years. We did, we did walkthroughs five years ago. And five years ago, that committee was ready to demolish it. And, um, there just was a lot of pushpup. We're, we wanted it. We thought it was a legal liability. We are afraid of kids breaking in. There was just so much that we just wanted it gone. So I think now the, we have a supportive board and, and maybe it can be a goal that we get to faster than in the past.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Tom, is there any last thing you'd like to say?
No, I'd like to thank you for the privilege to come before the board and present my budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you for doing such an excellent job.
All right, I want to invite Jason Pelletier for Technology, Library, and Media.
Thank you. Um, I have a, um, I have a sheet here with a little bit larger font for the secure, uh.
Cause yeah, on this, on this, we, we had taken the infrastructure improvement for technology off the capital improvement plan. A couple of years ago, it was around $200,000, $300,000 a year. Uh, it was kind of a constant thing. And with this being, with the remote initiative, thanks Jason. Remote initiative, the, the ESSR funds that we use to purchase more technology, the one-to-one device implementation that we have now achieved. Uh, it really necessitated to be back on the CIP. And a lot of what you're seeing here, I'll let Jason explain it, is to maintain that one-to-one with current machines. And to make sure, more importantly, that we have the infrastructure, the kind of stuff that no one sees that's behind the curtain, that makes it all run. Cause that, that's always evolving and it's always needs to be upgraded and retrofitted and changed. Even the wiring in the buildings that we did 10 years ago probably has to be redone. I know Jason's told me that we, there's a lot of runs that we have a way too long. Cause you're not supposed to be anything over 300 feet or 250.
Yeah, it, it depends on who wants to certify, who you talk to. 300 you can get away with, uh, but 250 is really.
Yeah, so when we wired in a lot of the like reeds and thorns, we had runs that were in excess of 300. So, you know, there's a whole different thing. So go ahead, Jason. I'm sorry. I just figured I'd talk while you passed out.
No problem. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you so much. Um, it's, uh, if you guys just direct me in which direction you'd like, I know you guys have questions. There's some things that definitely revolved around the capital improvement plan. There's a bulk of those. And there's things that correlate to the regular budget by line. So I don't know if you wanna, if you want me to go into capital improvement or if you wanna, if you want me to answer questions from, go line by line and do capital improvement at the end.
I think you should do the CIP part.
You got it. Um, so one of my tasks was to go and inventory everything in Merrimack School District. In regards to technology in the classroom, uh, in the network closets, um, access points, like, you know, everything. Backup servers, um, classroom technology, pretty much everything. So, um, I came on board, um, December 28th of 2021. Uh, so just about a year, um, a year into it. So, um, going through that process, I inventoried and we have a lot of technology, uh, in, in district. So, um, I went and continually scanned network for computers that are actually on, not looking at a database that could be out of date or whatnot. Actually really scanned the network. What do we really have on? Get the serial numbers, find out how old all the machines are, uh, look back at previous purchases and everything. So we have, you know, over 1,700, um, computers, so Windows devices with between labs, classrooms. Teacher laptops, all that stuff. Um, we have 19 physical servers. Uh, with the Chromebooks, we have over 3,500 Chrome devices between one-to-one. Um, and in other areas where we, where we have the Chromebooks. In the classroom, we have a projector in almost every single classroom. And, um, they, classrooms also have digital peripherals, like document cameras and, um, in interactive teachbars, memo teachbars. There's also, we have a lot of iPads because we have one-to-one, uh, K-31, they all have iPads and we have some STEM kits. So, uh, there's a lot there. We also have, um, items called sans, which is storage area network. I'll go into that a little bit deeper. Those are, those are really expensive, um, roughly for the high school, $100,000, roughly for the, um, middle school, $70,000. So we have two of them at each one of those. So those are big, big items. Um, 85 switches, six routers, firewall, self, uh, we have voice-over IP phones and then we have battery backups for everything. So that, it's a very large list that ends up coming to a total of about five, a little over 5.7 million dollars worth of equipment. In district. So the large amount of, of, um, of equipment. So it was, let's look at how much it would cost to replace that, right? And in the budget, it, that we had, there really was, uh, there's like, we had like a small amount for switches. Um, and then we had things for like leased equipment, but there wasn't really, there wasn't anything that could sustain replacing the equipment. Um, and why is it so important to replace? When it comes to, um, the infrastructure, as far as switching and cabling and routers, when we use all these words. That is basically the, the backbone. That's what everything rides on. So when you're doing, uh, when you're in, doing instruction in the classroom, everything goes to the wireless access point or through the wall. And then it hits the cabling, then it goes to the switch, then the router, and then out to the internet. So everything rides on that. And technology's use has been ramping up quite a bit. And that doesn't matter. You can spend millions of dollars per, per building on classroom equipment. If that infrastructure fails, any teaching with technology is not going to happen. So it's extremely, extremely important. And then on the other side of that, you have business side. So, um, people need to be paid. Teachers need to put their grades in. There's a whole bunch of other things that aren't just classroom related that is detrimental to, um, to regular operations to the district. So, um, well, what's important to do is have that replaced in a fiscally responsible manner. And in, within best practices, right? You know, eight, nine, 10 years before you replace a computer, just think about computers that you guys have at home. Or, you know, these, these devices are at work that people are bringing back and forth all day long. Kids are bringing them back and forth all day long. They get a lot of use. They might have hun, you know, they're gonna have hundreds of kids being, using them, touching them, everything like that. Kids are bringing them back and forth all day long. They get a lot of use. They might have hun, you know, they're going to have hundreds of kids being, using them, touching them, everything like that. So, um, waiting that long just means that that technology will eventually not be reliable. Then teachers won't be using technology. The students won't be enriched in the curriculum with all this technology, um, all the software and everything like that. So, um, one question that comes up is, oh, so it's about $6 million to replace everything. You do it, the six-year plan, then you're done. Um, unfortunately, if you want to continue with using technology, making sure that's reliable, that's always on, it's always available. Um, that's going to be a constant cycle. One thing when you're doing, uh, technology, um, um, cycles, usually the first round is the most expensive round. Cause you're updating a whole bunch of things. Technology will change and then what you'll find out is, you know what? We don't need as many computers. We don't need as many of, of servers because you consolidate and you do more, you do more things. So, um, this one cycle is going to be probably the most expensive cycle that we have. Um, unless things drastically change in the technology realm. So, um, we're hoping that after, after a few years, even when we get to that sixth year, that might, these numbers might fall. Um, even before we get to that sixth year or that fifth year. So, um, just keep in mind if, if you guys, um, decide that this is, that this is the route that you want to go. That these numbers that you see can definitely go down and, um, and we hope that they go down. So. The other thing that, um, that we have that's part, that's another big piece of this budget is, um, the software. In licensing, we have over a hundred pieces of, um, software that we license, that we pay for. And, um, and that, again, that's all enriching the curriculum, um, helping with business, helping with teachers for professional development. Helping the students learn, um, and making class more engaging, um, and, um, and helping those students learn and get ready for, for their careers. So all of those pieces kind of come together and again, with replacing these things within, um, a good, uh, good fiscally responsible timeframe, it will just ensure that all of that other money that's being spent, uh, is being used. And not, oh, technology's not working. Look, no little theater. We don't have the microphones, you know, the equivalent of, uh, my desktop computer's not working anymore. I'm so used to it. I'm not going to use technology. So. With that, do you guys have any other questions about?
Well, I think that, and this may not, it may be for you, it may not be, but Bill, correct me if I'm wrong. Part of the NIASC, um, foundational visit, uh, listed technology is one of the areas of improvement at the high school.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yes, that's correct.
And part of that's because not all the computers could connect and there were dead spots. There are things like that. So, um, while it seems like big ticket items for six years and keeping a six-year plan. Just knowing first of all, that our accreditation noted that our technology needed to be upgraded. Um, I think is an important thing to remember as we're looking at this, that it's not just our one-to-one devices. Not just that thanks to COVID, really, teachers are using technology in the classroom way more than we ever did in the past. But it's, it, it's an expectation now of our accreditation and the state. That we are making sure that every child and every student has good, reliable technology.
And I was going to say, I, um, Jason presented at the planning and building committee. So a lot of the questions I've already asked him, but one of the things I want to reiterate is, um, there's, there's a school district that I worked at that, um, a couple of people here are connected to. And the technology was never upgraded. So what would happen is when grades closed and teachers went to put the grades in. Everything froze and broke and people get, and so it was the most stressful time for everybody. And it was like trying to, you know, tape a wire so we could try to get the grades in. And now parents are waiting for report cards that are two weeks late because our technology, it was a mess. And so after living through that, I, I understand how important when you talk about the business end and the educational end. They're really together because if you don't do the business side, you can't do the educational side.
I'm glad you said that Lori, because what I wrote down while, um, Jason was talking was what happens if we don't adopt this capital improvement plan? And I think I'm extrapolating from listening to both of you talk, that what happens if we don't do this is first, we have everything falling apart. And then we have, okay, everything's falling apart and this is not working and everyone's time is being wasted. And then I'm assuming that everyone's money is then also wasted because we're going to be doing it on the fly. And we're going to be doing it, we're going to have to do more at once than if we spread it out over six years. Is that an, is that an accurate sort of assessment of the situation? Like this is, this is better management of our resources to do it, uh, in a, in a planned, methodical way. And make sure it's up to date as we go along instead of like waiting until everything's falling to bits.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, you know, we take that, this technology working very seriously, right? Cause what ends up happening is we are just constantly chasing things that are broken, right? So, um, you know, like the, the, what ends up happening is the technicians are just on the go fixing things that normally they would be improving things and getting ahead of things and helping people out and enriching them, giving some more PD and one-on-one time. So that teachers can, can figure out their systems a little bit better or upgrading the cabling, um, upgrading the connectivity in the classroom. So that things are even more reliable, um, they can do better documentation, they can, they can give more of their time to students and faculty. Instead of constantly just always running around doing things that are old and, you know, just putting it together. Cause like, we gotta get this thing going. So that is absolutely what happens. And, uh, it's just really hard to move forward when, when you're in that type of environment.
And, um, and again, agreeing with all of this and as important, you know, having all these great educational tools is great. Uh, and, you know, it always comes down to, we're preparing kids to be in the real world that uses all of this stuff. And so how can we possibly say we're preparing kids to whatever path they choose, whether it's college, the workforce, armed services, you name it. All of them rely on technology and I assure you, those companies are not holding back on their technology. They're looking for profits. They're looking to increase their, their business. And they're going to spend everything they got into the technology to make them the best possible option for the consumers. So, um, if we want to say we're preparing our kids for that situation, I, we got to invest in that stuff.
Yeah, I, I got a real actual lesson in that recently when, um, my son went to college and I ordered all his books and they arrived in a box and hit into his room. And then when he went to move out at the end of the quarter, he's like, what am I supposed to do with this box? He sends me a picture. I'm like, those are your books. And he's like, oh, was I supposed to open it? And I was like, all right, it's just a joke. Mom, everybody uses eBooks. He's like, nobody uses those. Don't ever do that again. Don't ever do that again. And I was like, okay, I'm out. I'm just going to like, make sure you have the money for that and you can, and this time he's like, I just put it and I read it all on my computer and I carry my computer with me everywhere. And that was me like, you know, 1974 baby. I, I think everything's a book. And, you know, but you're right. Nobody does things the way I did them, even a few, I'd like to think, short years ago. You know what I mean? So we do, we have to prepare these kids for a whole different experience than we realize is out there.
We old Jenna, we old.
Yeah, we old.
And, and I think the other thing too, to just say to you in the public, um, when we looked at the stuff, like the prices that we put to here wasn't, is, it's not pie in the sky, right? Um, we even look, um, at, before COVID, you could get some really reliable, um, secondhand stuff that was fully warranted for, you know, five years. That stuff is, does not exist anymore. The cost of, of devices is way up. So even looking into that, it's like eight hundred dollars for a device that's already pre-owned for a few years. Or a couple of hundred dollars more for something that's brand new. Um, the other thing too is, um, a lot of these companies give, uh, huge discounts to education. So when we talk about like the sand storage, so what that is, it's a big box, high-speed.
Thank you. I was hoping you were going to get there.
So it's literally just a big box and has a bunch of things that are redundant in it, but it's got hard drives in it. So think of hard drives as storing all of your data and everything. And then what we do is we have the servers, which are just really big computers that, um, are really powerful and robust and can last a long time. And they attach to that for storage. And then what we can do is have like three of those servers attached to that. And what they do is they have special software to make 30 ser, the, it's virtualization to make 30 servers happen. So that's way cheaper to hot, to have a SAN on some high-speed backbone switching, um, on some really good servers. Than buying all these physical things with power and the hardware requirements and all that other type of stuff. So that's where that consolidation goes into. But for that exact same SAN, um, a, a corporation would be charged probably, um, you know, three, four, five times the amount for that same one. And we always go swi, we always go, um, shopping for these things and whatnot. So what we put in here, it is like the switching, it is in, it's enterprise level, right? But we're not going pie in the sky, all of this crazy things. We're getting things that we can grow into. Um, but everything in here is, is to fit our needs and where we're going to go, but not, this isn't crazy, um, equipment. So.
Yeah. And just, you know, so you get a, an idea of the scope of things. You know, when I, when I first got here in the year 2000, there was no such thing as a network. We had arena scheduling at the high school. You go around with cards. We had a computer system that was run off something called the VAX by DEC. Everybody remembers DEC. VAX was, was as big as a Volkswagen VW microbus, right? With flowers on it and everything like that. Um, we really initially started the network back then. We had to cable initially schools because there was no cabling in any of the schools. So in 20 years, we've come exceedingly far. And when I hear Jason talk about, you know, the SAN and how it saves, like you can have 30 servers, you know, replace 30 servers. Because we started off with individual servers. In fact, the power school server that held, held everybody's grades was in the basement of the greenhouse. Nice place for it with the great climate control in there, right? Not optimal spaces. So we, we've, you know, kind of migrated over. And, you know, when you're talking about stuff like this, that's on the backend, you know, it, we've gone leaps and bounds and. And now in power school, you know, at first teachers like, you're not taking away my paper grade book. I'm not putting my grades in, in power school. I'm not doing it. I'm not doing it. I'm not doing it. Right? Now if power school is down for an hour, it's like the end of the world is happening. So there, you know, there's critical systems that we have and, you know, this gentleman here is excellent representative. And we have full faith and confidence in him to keep things, keep things rolling. But yeah, it's an investment. It's a constant investment.
Thank you for understanding also that there is no turning back.
There is.
You know, 30 years ago, technology was considered a novelty on the desk of a, of a teacher. But we couldn't do the same thing with a rotary dial phone 30 years ago that we, we do with this. And that important thing for everyone to realize is it's a consumable resource. And that's why there's an annual cost outlay that's, that's involved. And we knew way back then that it was going to be one of the most expensive annual components of a, of a school department operating budget. And it is in fact, and that's a reality with, that we have to deal with every year.
All right, Naomi, you have some questions specific to the budget outside of the CIP. So I, I'm going. Going to turn them over to you.
I'm not going to ask my first one because I'm pretty sure that got answered in all the discussion that we have. Oh, I was curious about books, um, because I noticed that the, the line item for buying books for the library had been leveled for the three years that we had available. And so I was curious because all that we've been talking about is, oh my God, inflation, 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 um, and everything costs more. And I was, um, curious, are we buying fewer books than we were before? And are we doing something else to compensate? Like, are we using eBooks? Are the libraries smaller? Are we using books longer? I was just curious.
Yeah. So there's a really good question. We actually went back to, to look at it and about 10 years ago, the line was, was 40,000, I believe. So, so it, um, so it went down to that 35,000 for about 10, 10 years now. So what happened last year was some of the books were hard to just get in general supply chain, just like everything else that was happening. Um, but the prices of them definitely increased, but we go shopping, right? So we have certain places that we can normally get books and then we have other outlets for it. So the librarians will put in, we want, um, a copy of this, we want a couple of copies of this, we want to do this. And they, and they purchase in cycles, um, during the year so that the library always has fresh content all of the time. So the prices have been increasing, which does mean that there's less, um, that can either be replaced or, or purchased. Uh, but they did work within that, um, within that, um, $35,000 to, to make sure that they met those student, uh, needs, the curriculum needs. Um, for, for that, but, um, we just get creative and, and work within, within our means for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a book person. So I saw that and I was like, wait a minute, why are we not buying more books? Um. Oh, and I don't remember some of what some of these were in reference to. I wish I had put that in there. Oh, I asked, this, this one was the line for organization and association membership. I asked this of all the other ones too, just because I, this is the first time I've been through this. I was curious what organizations were members of.
Yeah. So, uh, very good, um, question and they all have acronyms. So I'm going to try to spell out acronym, then say what it is. So, um, so like the official ones are AASL. So that's American Association for School Librarians. It's a, that's where a lot of like the standards and, and whatnot come from. Uh, COSAN, which is the Consortium for School Networking. It's a technology base for, um, uh, how education technology and moving forward, uh, with that. There's, uh, NISTI, which is the New Hampshire Society for Technology and Education. Um, NHSAA, that's the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. ASCD, which is Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. So those are kind of like the really big ones that, that we're a part of. Some of those are, are, uh, have fees associated and that's why those are in those lines.
Yeah, I figured. I was just, uh, just wondering. Um, and this one, I put what it was, so I remember what it was about. There was a line for professional development. And I guess there wasn't, it wasn't used much in 2021, 22, which I think a lot of that wasn't used in 21, 22. And I was curious if there's any plans for anything like that this year or next year.
Yeah. And, um, I think some of that too, is that transition over for, um, uh, coming in in January, um, December, January. So, uh, coming on board, a lot of stuff in my, I just can't get to, can't get to that. But, um, South by Southwest EDU is, uh, is a conference. And now the thankfully because of COVID, most of these conferences now we can do remote. Uh, because that one's usually always in Texas and, uh, travel and everything like that makes it so that it's not really attainable. But that one's, it's reasonable for, uh, remote. Um, there's the NHCTO conferences. Uh, MasQ, which is, is, is a lot like the Kristin McAuliffe Technology Conference in New Hampshire, but that's like the mass equivalent. Um, so those ones are always there and then we, I always get, and our librarians always get these other PD opportunities that come up. Um, so, uh, definitely invest in those PD opportunities and, and want to go to those.
Ken?
Yeah, I just had, um, just really one question and, and for all the old school vintage lovers out there, I'll just say, I have a room in my house dedicated to my vinyl record collection. So before I ask this question, just know that I have an appreciation for the physical. But do we have a continued need for physical periodicals and magazines, especially with all of these great programs and software that we're developing? Do we, are kids using them? Are kids checking them out?
So that is a, that's a really good question. And, um, so a lot of kids, that, that physical is still really good, right? And detaching from the screen is, is an important thing to do. Uh, technology director, but definitely believe that, don't you, don't techno, good, responsible use of technology doesn't mean all the time. So, um, there's also learners that love that and it's so, it's so much less distracting to have that piece in front of you. Instead of like, I can open up a tab and look at this ad that's flashed on there and whatnot. So they do have that, but it is starting to dwindle. Um, supply chain with that even gets affected. So printing and paper and all that stuff. So like last year, a lot of periodicals, we couldn't even get certain ones because they just weren't produce, mass producing them. Um, and what they do, the, a lot of the magazines, they'll go to, they'll go out to the other consumers before they go into like these mass markets. Just because they're like, we make, we make a lot more money with that, that amount that's on the, on the periodical than when we get to, um, to these mass, these mass purchases. So there, um, that's why the periodicals are down, but I think that what we'll probably see is those start to really kind of dwindle down. Not because of us and we're deciding that, that less period, they're just not being created. Um, and in the online resources for some of that stuff, so like, say like New York Times or all this stuff, that's a very expensive. And usually we have to license per student, but not every student can, will actually leverage that resource. So having that periodical, we can still have that, we can share that, um, and, and not break the bank at the same time. Um, and, and not break the bank at the same time.
And I certainly understand, especially at like the elementary level, um, some of those physical tangible. Periodicals are important, because you know, a lot, there's even like activities and things that you can do in there. And yes, I totally understand that some kids truly need that. I just wonder as the kids grow older in middle school and in high school. And I think we can all agree again, because we are of a certain vintage, that yes, we all like the physical, but, and, and we all think that there's value there, but. Is the reality, are they being used, you know? Um, so I guess, I, and I don't have the answer. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers, but I know that the kids, and they don't normally check them out because the periodicals will stay in the library. Yeah, so um, so they do get used, but um, as we're, as we're seeing, I know that they're, they're doing discussions and, and actually looking at. Periodicals, they started last year, they probably did it even before I was here. Um, and they're still looking at it like, what do we want and what don't we want to have? So they are taking a look at that. Um, so the, the librarians have, have kind of. Started pushing, pulling back from some of those subscriptions if they're not being used. So right now, if they're in the budget. It's because the librarians are like, I know students are using them. They're, they're actually physically taking them. Um, or classrooms are using them for. For whatever their needs are.
Yeah, and especially seeing that the, the library in the high school's been uh, you know, remodeled and re-envisioned. And it has more of a friendly adult kind of feel to it with the furniture and the tables and the. The moving of the circulation desk and the removal of that hideous turnstile that looked like a Boston subway in nineteen seventy-six. You know, when you went in. And you know, now, you know, they'll go and they'll grab something and they'll just, you know, hang out for a while. You know, and, and just be there, you know, which is nice.
They actually look and talk to each other as opposed to.
They, as opposed to do that, yeah.
Impressed.
We do see that happen.
We do see that happening, yeah.
Oh, well, there you go.
Well, Jason, thank you again for coming tonight. Do you have any last remarks?
I know, it's been a great year. Thank you very much for having me. If you guys have any other questions or anything. Um, about any of this, definitely feel free to ask. And um, um, just appreciate being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. All right, well, now we are gonna move on to our Merrimack Middle School and invite Adam and Kathleen to come present for us.
I'm not sure, may I ask, um, I don't recall if we've had an opportunity to meet Kath, Kathy Hopper previously this, this year. No, and so. Kathy is a very welcome addition to our school district. As you know, she used to work here many years ago in what, Reed's Ferry? Two years ago, yeah, excuse me. Yeah, yeah.
Two years ago seems like.
I'm sorry about that. But uh, we're very, very glad to have her back uh in Merrimack.
That's great. So, so welcome, Adam and Kathleen. Um, before we begin, there's a couple of things, um. You know, I've heard very positive feedback about the change in the culture and the climate of the middle school. And that there's been really positive change. So I just wanna bring that to your attention. And then it's always about the little things, right? Like, so, so what is it? And so I, I have friends that go to middle school basketball games or whatever. So I guess last week, some kids left some milk cartons and chips. And. So the athletic director had them go all back up and brought a trash barrel. Explained to them about core values and respect and responsibility and had them clean the gym before they left. And when I heard that, I just loved it, because that's what we've been talking about all along. So. It's a little thing, it was a snapshot, but I was really glad to hear it. Um, Lori and I were in a Zoom meeting this week. And so. At the end, we decided to do our questions together, but because I talked so much, I'm gonna let her do all of them.
Thank you for that story. I'll be sure to pass that on to Bab and our, our athletic.
All right, so being in the little things, the first question we had was we were looking at the transportation costs. Kind of across the board and noticed that the science field trips had increased, but athletic transportation had not. And there was just concern. If the athletic one needed to increase and that kind of thing. So we just, for the public, wanted to know kind of how many buses are involved. And um, is that really um. Does the athletic side need to be comparably raised with the science field trip side of fuel costs?
Right, so um, to, to answer your first question related to the buses, um, so there are approximately six. Buses total for the science field trip. So it kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of that increase. Um, as far as the athletic transportation, uh, so what we. Made a decision to do in this, in this particular one was to level fund it. Uh, so that. You know, there wouldn't be as much of an overage as we historically have seen. When we budget this, in the past, we budgeted that we would be. Uh, all of the away games, right? For the regular season, but then away games for every single postseason game. Um, so it, it, it consistently has been one that's been a, a bit under expended. So that was the, the logic behind why we chose to do that.
We always like to hear that, yes.
Well, well, but understand that's, that's away teams too. So they, if they are the number one seed, right? They come to play us. We don't go to play them.
All right. And then the next one was just, um, can you, there, there's just lots of line items that say an increase of ten percent. And I think the public. Probably wants to hear, you know, the rationale by picking that number, ten percent, especially given supply chain issues.
Right, so uh, you know, it, it's interesting when you look at it as, as a whole, because there are certain items that certainly are more than ten percent. Uh, there certainly are some items that are less than ten percent. Uh, so in, in the process, we as a, a, a district. You know, with, with consulting with Matt, there was, the decision was made to have a ten percent increase. And the supply is, as a conservative estimate of what we would uh potentially see kind of across the board.
Right. Yeah, as you recall, I was talking at some point in time. Um, cost of uh. Box of paper used to be around thirty bucks. And then it was like doubled, it was like sixty. And then we negotiated a little bit and brought it down to like, you know, forty-six. So. It was a, a, a figure that we picked to be uniform across the board as a. Uh, acceptable level of increase that we thought was going to happen district-wide for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Not knowing what inflation is gonna do, not knowing if there's gonna be unemployment issues going on. Not knowing a lot. So it was one of these things where looking at past history and looking at trends coming up and looking at the mix of what we were. Purchasing, it seemed like a reasonable number to pick. And so we did it in that fashion.
And I would add that across the board, the schools do a good job of not expending every penny that is budgeted. They're frugal.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable saying we don't, there's a lot of unknowns, so we need to budget for this. Um, knowing that what isn't spent goes back to taxpayers.
Correct.
But we never wanna be caught short.
Being caught short is, is not the, you wanna build a budget so you can oper- operationalize what you promise. At this table right here and now for what the next year is gonna look like. You don't wanna mess it up by short sheeting yourself on. On text and supplies and it being a little bit too conservative. And then you have to take it away from, from kids and programs. So that's the rationale.
And I would just add to that, Lori, just, and specifically with the middle school budget, I was impressed at how the number, how consistent the numbers were in terms of what was. Budgeted for and what was spent. Uh, I was, I, so yeah, I felt really good looking at these numbers and thinking they were pretty well researched and thought out.
There it is. Yes, um, I went through and calculated percentage increases on a lot of stuff, because I was curious. And for the portion of the middle school budget that we're looking at right now, overall. It was a zero point five percent increase over last year. So we're talking ten percent more across the board for supplies, but like this is a. Really level funded budget.
You know, may I just mention also, just, just for a second, that paper is an interesting commodity too, when you look at it in terms of cost of. Adjustments, either upward or downward, mostly upward now. Most people think it's a result of domestic inflation, but. A country like China is a mass, massive consumer of paper products from the United States. And. One of the reasons for that is China does not have a great degree of forestation. And so the demand for paper basically comes from the United States. And so. There's a lot of international market created fluctuations in the price of a commodity such as paper.
I have a personal experience, not with paper, but with that same problem, when we were getting ready to um. Take up our twenty-five-year-old carpet and put in hardwood floors, I had originally looked at black walnut. And in the two years that it took us to decide to make that, China had been buying up all the black walnut in the US and Canada. And so getting black walnut hardwood floors is like a luxury expense now here in the US, even though we have more black walnut. Than any other nation in the world. Because it's going, it, it's, it's getting bought up internationally. All right, so in the co-curricular, the first question is more like a, a language issue that we've got other supplies listed twice. And, and it may just be a clarification there that we need to fix. But the biggest thing that, that I wanna mention, and because I was um. Sleeping twenty hours a day last week and couldn't be here because I was so ill. Um, and I didn't get to say this to the principals of the elementary, both for the three elementary principals, if they're watching right now. And, and for the middle school. I had requested and, and Kim Yarlet, and I had the discussion about seeking grants for the co-curricular expenses. As much as possible. So um, my question was, um, have we looked into that?
So we do have uh, a, a grant for our first uh program. Um, to my knowledge, that's the only grant that has, has really come up and, and been available. It's one that we've had. Though last year and as well as this year.
Yeah. So yeah, it's a first robotics uh team. Uh, Merrimack High School got one for ten K. I think the middle school is, is eight thousand, around that. And so there is grants in, in that area that we've applied for and put in for. Uh, but there's not a whole heck of a lot out there specifically. Targeted towards increasing co-curricular activities in schools right now.
And then um, this is a positive. I think the middle school does this well. And so I think it would be worth our time to hear an explanation on how. The uniform replacement cycle plan works, because as you guys saw, the basketball team is in line for that recycle plan or cycle plan this. This year. But I'd like to hear how that works.
So we, we certainly do try to be very systematic and logical related to the uniforms at the middle school. Um, so that oftentimes you'll, you would see that kind of rotating through the different teams. It's really based on, on, on two factors. Uh, the first factor is the age of the uniform. And the second factor is the, kind of the wear and tear, if you will, factor. Uh, so for example, wrestling singlet sees a lot more stress than, you know, a, a, a basketball uniform even, right? So we're very mindful of trying to um, create a cycle so that approximately every six to seven years. Uh, teams are gonna have uh new uniforms that help them, you know, help them look, look. The part of a, of a school and interschoolastic team. So.
And like I said, I think that shows great foresight and planning. And I think that's something that. You know, we've been talking a lot about with technology and with those kinds of things. And so just, you know, looking at it from a, a public member standpoint or like. You know, why are we suddenly buying all this with basketball? Well, because it's been six years, it's time for them. And. Um, and I like that we have that rotation happening. And so that's the main reason why I brought it up.
Thank you.
All right, Jenna.
All right, it's my turn. Um, first of all, Adam, nice to see you.
Good to see you.
I always have the warmest feelings of Adams. First time uh, as a parent, I ever got a call from a principal was from Adam. So when I see him, I think of that warm day. When that happened. I was like, oh boy. Anyway.
And we survived, and we survived.
We've mostly survived. Um, yes. So I have such wonderful feelings of seeing you every time I see you, because you always handle that so well. Um, also, you've been so generous. We've gone back and forth over the last week. I was just trying to get some clarification about some, some things. I don't have a question for you, as you know. Um, I, what I do, I am going to use this opportunity to talk about something, to bring attention to something in the budget that I think. Is important. And um, I'll be talking about it when we get to the high school too. In the Merrimack Middle School budget, there's forty thousand nine hundred seven dollars. Budgeted for sports, which includes things like transportation, officials and equipment and uniforms. Now, I'm not questioning that at all. Let me state that upfront. Wherever the cameras are. Hear me when I say, I'm not targeting that amount. All other co-curricular activities at the middle school have just four thousand four hundred dollars budgeted for them. But that includes awards for sports and academics. So all of that money is not going to other co-curriculars. Um, it's my understanding that some co-curriculars like robotics require transportation that is not included in the budget. Maybe that's what they use grant money for. I don't know. They probably use it for supplies and various different things. Um, so as with the high school. I, oh, some of those co-curriculars, obviously, they need supplies and maybe, I don't want, I don't wanna say uniforms, but like costumes for the play or. Uh, maybe uniforms for certain, like, I don't know if they have, what, I don't know exactly what the, what the co-curriculars are. For all I know, they need a T-shirt or whatever. None of that is covered. In the budget anywhere. This is not a criticism. This is just an awareness moment. Um. Sports get a lot of taxpayer money in this town, a lot. Um, in the middle school budget and in the high school budget. And we're, I'm gonna talk about it again when we get there. But many other equally valuable co-curricular activities do, just don't. They don't. Um, I'm not targeting sports for a reduced amount of funding. Full stop. I am trying to use this budget cycle to highlight the inequitable funding we currently have in our district between sports and all other. Co-curricular activities that matter just as much to sports as sports to kids who aren't sporty. Or don't participate or choose not to participate in sports. Um. I'm not holding you, Adam, or Merrimack Middle School, responsible for that inequity. My point in saying this now, and when I talk about it when we get to the high school, it's an ongoing equity and community values conversation that we need to be engaging in. Because while sports are important and important to a huge population of kids, there's a huge population of kids that engage in co-curriculars that have nothing to do with. Sports. And we, the value we place on it is not reflected in our budget. In any way, right? Putting on a school play costs money. Yes, they do take in money. But it, it's not enough to offset the cost of what they need. I know, only because I've had kids participating in it, you know, I'm digging in my. Oh, oh, you're gonna be Ursula? Okay, do I have a black skirt? Where's the, you know, you know, nobody's providing a uniform for that. I'm digging around looking what, I can make a. You know, a shell necklace out of at home, because you know, that's how it is with theater. Um, and again. This is not a, hey, let's put so what, like forty thousand dollars in the budget and call it equal. That's not what I'm saying either. This isn't the year for that. I would like to just draw attention to the inequity between sports and literally everything else. And the, the, the chasm is wide. Forty thousand dollars for sports, four thousand four hundred dollars provided by the taxpayers for literally anything else that is a co-curricular activity. Again, that is not a, a criticism in any way. To me, this is a community values conversation and an equity conversation.
So, so I hear everything that you say. And I think that, uh, you know, getting a drama club and getting. You know, a regular school play at both the middle school and the high school with, uh, I know the high school that I was at, we had two. Fall and spring. I know uh, just to buy the play was three thousand dollars, just to buy the play. Um, you know, I don't wanna, there, there is, uh, obviously because um. You know, the uh, sports teams travel and they have NHIA rules. There are certain things that we can't change with sports. We know that. But um, to, and, and I was an advisor for many, many things. And that there is a difference in money. Like, you don't need, when you're the SAD advisor or, you know. Um, you know, National Honor Society or any of those advisors, you don't need the same. Uh, amount of money because you're doing some fundraising, you're doing community service. But there should be line items. Uh, but I'm gonna go back to drama. I, I think that if we started there. And we put in a really great drama program, we would get a lot of kids on the, on that. And that, that should be something we look at at our goals meeting this spring to. Really push towards the arts.
And I wanna say Merrimack Middle School has an incredible drama program. My, my child did participate in it. I've seen many of their shows. And it is, they do a great job with whatever money they, I guess, raise or have or whatever's there. They do a fantastic job. And my MacGyver.
whatever money they, I guess, raise or have or whatever's there, they do a fantastic job, and my MacGyver ring of.
Well, and I, of course, the music teacher completely agrees with that. Um, and, you know, you look at the numbers, I know in my district, no one's questioning the cost of athletics. It's, it's a huge, it's a huge cost, and transportation's a big part of it, you can't control a lot of that. Um, most kids don't participate in athletics, most do not. Uh, and that's a fact, and as much as we value them and we want those, those athletic teams to be supported and financed, um, if we put resources into whatever it is, drama or first or, you know, any of those other co- uh, uh, organizations, those will grow, uh, and uh, and just draw more kids in, so yeah, one hundred percent, I, I am one hundred percent buying that.
Right, we will move on to Naomi.
Okay, I'm gonna lead off with my, uh, newbie to the school board and doesn't have any kids at the middle school yet question, which is, um, what are the class sizes and, and teacher schedules like at the middle school? Like how, how big are the classes, how many classes are they teaching a day? I just, I haven't been there yet, so I don't have a framework for like what a day looks like at the middle school, so I'm curious.
Absolutely, absolutely. So our class sizes are around twenty-two to twenty-four. Uh, twenty-four is the number that's listed in the, uh, this, the New Hampshire State for a lab science. So, uh, you, you know, obviously, if you're, if you have something that is, has moving parts, you wanna not, not have too many middle schoolers in there, um, without the support of personnel. Uh, so our, 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 we, we group ourselves as, as teams, which is made up of the four core content areas, so math, social studies, science, language arts. Uh, and so within that group, those, those groups of kids, you're looking at about, you know, ninety-ish, ninety-plus students who are on each of the different teams. Uh, the team teachers have a, a total of four of their content area classes, and then we also have a support class called Hatchet that a number of the students participate in. Uh, so five classes. Our unified arts teachers have six classes, which are slightly shorter than uh, the duration of the time that they would have in like a language arts, math, social studies, or science class. So, um, it, it certainly is a lot of moving parts. Uh, but it, it works well for those students and, and, and for the staff, so.
Thank you, I've o- only so far from peers heard good things about their kids' experiences at the middle school, so. Um, my son will be there next year.
We look forward to it.
Um, I'm gonna make my mental note to myself to make a note of what these line items I'm asking questions are, because again, I don't remember the numbers. Yeah, the, um, I was curious cuz there was a line for replacing microscopes, and I was just wondering what the condition and age of the microscope's being replaced for. If that's like, if you're on a cycle with that, or if it's one of those where we've waited too long and it's massively overdue.
Uh, so, so I wouldn't say we've waited too long and it's massively overdue, but it will be if we don't, you know, continue doing that. So what we've come to know is that, uh, the reason for the decrease in the repair line was actually a move of, of some of those funds over to the replacement line. Uh, it, just like everything else, we have older microscopes, ten plus years old. And I know, kind of starting into the, the next question too, a little bit that you had, you had passed on related to the age of a, the fleet. So we have a number that are, are quite old, and so the, 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 the ability to be able to find the pieces to be able to repair them, and the ability of, of us to be able to, uh, take pieces off of those that we have kind of decommissioned and use them to repair the ones that are like, uh, is, it's becoming very limited. So in the past, uh, for the past, actually quite a few budget cycles, we've been trying to regularly just continue to replace those till we get to a point where we have a, a solid class set of microscopes to be able to utilize for the support of the science program.
I think one of the themes tonight has been, it's better to replace things ongoing instead of letting them get old and doing it all at once, so. I appreciate that. Um, the next one I wanna ask is actually a little bit down, um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, and this was across the board at all the schools, and I'm, no, it's gonna be a theme, we s- uh, we spent much less than budgeted on Title One tutors and paraeducators, I'm assuming it was because difficulty getting staff. Um, and I just wanna keep highlighting this issue, are we similarly understaffed this year? Are we, are we, are there plans in place to try and get more? Is there anything that we as a board can do to help the, the district to, cuz these are vital positions that I feel like we need people in.
Right, so, uh, I will say that, it, you know, certainly there, there have been some shortage issues. For example, we did not have a Title One tutor, uh, in the last school year, particularly for mathematics. Um, it, this year we do, uh, so we're very lucky, right? So I'm excited to say that, I guess, similarly, uh, not, while we, while we may not have complete and total fully, that we certainly are in better, a better position this year than we were last year. Um, you know, we certainly, you know, continue to look and, and recruit and do anything we can. Uh, I know, uh, Melissa has done a great job with, uh, you know, trying to help, you know, in so many different ways with pulling, pulling, uh, professionals into, into our district, so.
And I would add to that, that's why we had the change. Because the, the current contract woefully underpays market, market value. So that, that is a large part of it. In the next contract.
Alright, my second question, I asked the elementary schools too, um, I'm curious about, cuz we, we budgeted more, more money last year for co-curricular programs, and I was curious what kind of things, uh, you've been doing with that money and how it's going.
Yeah, so, um, so far this year, and, uh, you know, I made myself a little, a little list cheat sheet. Um, you know, some of these, we've, we've had a, a number of different clubs, we, we're only, we're not even halfway through the year. Uh, and a lot of times the clubs that we have, uh, the clubs in the co-curricular activities that we provide, you know, sometimes are, are student-driven. Um, so, for example, we recently had, uh, uh, an, an anime, anime, I apologize, anime.
You could be both.
So, uh, uh, but it recently had a club startup because it was something that students were interested in doing. We had a staff member who, you know, shared their interest and wanted to provide an outlet and an opportunity for kids to be able to do that. So I, I, you know, we've had, um, you know, obviously, the Quiz Bowl is something that we've, we've, we have, uh, we do have a very active, uh, and engaged drama club, um, which I will be sure to make sure that you guys are invited to the musical when it comes, it won't be until March. Um, but it is, it is always an amazing and impressive site. Uh, you know, we have a hiking club, student council. Um, we actually have an MMS TV, I, uh, club. So on top of, on top of what we had for the flex activity, uh, one of the solutions, I know Ken, you had asked in, in, in the spring meeting, okay, well, how can we help get some of the band and, and chorus kids involved? And there was, so our, our, our staff said, hey, we should make this a club activity, let's have them come after school. It's not as, you know, not exactly in the school day, but it's an opportunity, um, which has been really cool, we've been able to do ski club. Ms. Hoppa just came from ski club before coming here tonight, she was out, she was out on the hill with the kids. So, um, uh, you know, uh, we have a, a, a group called Merrimack Middle Earth, which is kind of like a Dungeons and Dragons and that kinda stuff, which is really cool. Um, so, uh, you know, and of course, some after-school help programs, art club. And I'll let you know when the spring comes, what other things kinda pop up that we were able to, uh, that, that these funds have helped us to be able to provide for, for kids, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, then I think this is the last one I'm gonna do is, um, I kinda mentioned this when, uh, Lori was talking, and I mentioned that the, the, your budget was incredibly level funded. It was one of the most level funded of, like, when I went through and did all my things, and I noticed that, um, aside from things that I expected to cost more because of inflation linked supplies and transportation and utilities and whatnot. Um, it was, it was really level funded, and I was wondering, um, because a lot of it was level funded for like the past, all the years that I have available is, is, and it kinda came up in the other first question that they asked us, were there any other accounts that we maybe have been overfunding? And, uh, are we, are we catching up to those, and do we have a plan for suddenly when we've been level funded year after year after year? We're gonna have to start going up.
Right, so, um, we certainly, similar to, to Jason, get creative within, uh, within the, the budget that we have. Uh, I'm, but it's one of those things that, you know, you, you, you make the most of, of, of what you have funding-wise available. Um, certainly this year with the ten percent increase in the supply budget, uh, that, that's certainly gonna be helpful. Um, some of the other, some of the other budgets in, in the line items would oftentimes we will do, uh, something like where we would potentially overexpend an account, um, and underexpend another account. So for example, like, like, the, the microscopes would be a potential example for that, right? So in a year, um, it, we'll, we'll kinda see where that's at. And if the need to overexpend is there, then we, we would look for a place where we would potentially underexpend so that we could explain that this is, this was that current moment, that current need that we had. Uh, and so we, we met that need, um, and, and found a way to, to make it work in another, uh, another area. So we do look at that though, because, you know, for the increased potential, right? So for example, in our furniture replacement line, we purchased, or we have put in for cafeteria tables. Um, when we were designing the budget for the, for, for this, or for the last school year, right? Um, we weren't, we weren't aware of what would potentially happen with inflation and all of that. Um, and so there's a pretty significant increase in that. But what you would see if you look back to the, the previous year is that there was an over expenditure in that account, right? So that, that's something that certainly queues us up, that there's a need to look at that with a little bit more of a fine tooth comb.
The, the reason I, that question comes to mind for me is because I used to work at a nonprofit organization where we were, we were, obviously, we were like pinching every penny, and we had a very tiny budget, and we were charging for a service that we offered, and we charged the same price for about fifteen years. And then I came on board and went, we've been charging the same price for fifteen years, and now all of a sudden, we can't afford the things we need, and so I wanna make sure that, that we're planning ahead and we're, w- we're not, if you keep it, if you keep it all flat for too long, like, obviously, you don't wanna raise it too much either, but there's a balance to be struck there. And the budget as a whole, I was actually really impressed with, I think administration did an excellent job with balancing all of the needs, but that was just something that spoke to me with that particular experience and noticing that this particular piece was like really level. Every time I see that, I'm like, that makes me worried that, you know, down the road, when we need some, some funds, are we, are we making sure we're thinking about it? So, that's kinda where I was coming from with that one.
Right, Ken? I, I just have one, um, and it's mostly just a clarification, um, and again, at the music stuff again. Um, lots of lines for instrumental music, you know, in terms of like, uh, purchasing equipment, updating equipment, which all makes sense. Um, I saw nothing in reference to choral music instruction. I realize that their needs maybe aren't as vast as instrumental music in terms of equipment, but, you know, I was just wondering, do they share those lines, um, or is, is, um, you know, or is there just no money in the budget for choral music instruction?
So, excellent question, uh, and it, it is something that is shared, uh, particularly with the, with the band and the instrumental. Uh, and something else I'm gonna look to, make a note so that we are clearer on that in the future, thank you for that.
Thanks, that's, that's all I got.
Right, would you like to say any final remarks?
I, I simply would like to say thank you for, you know, taking the time and looking over this, being thorough, and at any point in time, if there's any questions, you know, Kathy and I are an email, phone call away, uh, we're more than happy to help, so, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I think we got lots of good questions and lots of good information tonight, especially on our technology side. So, um, at this point, um, I'm gonna just ask for any final comments from the board members before I open it up to the public. Alright, well then, with that, uh, public comments on agenda items, if anyone would like to come up and speak about anything we discussed tonight.
Hi, maybe, is it on?
I think it's on.
Alright, hi. Um, my name's Heather Robitaille, forty-five Springfield Circle. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone for their presentations, for all the questions and the information. I'm excited as I hear more and more about Matt talking about the master plan for the high school and what that will mean to the community, not just to the high school students. Um, I would also just like to put in my full support, looking at something like a performance art, performing art center for Merrimack, the benefit I think it could give to our community, and that it could also bring revenue into our community as well, um, but giving a lot more access to students and community members that might be part of different activities and debate clubs and other different venues that that could open up for people, I think would be really valuable, so. Thank you, thank you for sharing, thank you for all the work and the creativity, uh, knowing how much thought has to go into planning what can be replaced, when and where you can pinch and find ways to stretch the dollars. Taxpayers appreciate it, and we know, uh, every penny spent is well worth it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, motion by Ken, second by Jenna, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero, thank you and good night.
Thank you and good night.